At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, July tenth, two thousand seventeen Planning Commission meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Pid here, Price, Hema.
Here.
Sharonell, Daniels, Lundell.
Here.
And Althoff.
Here.
That brings us to number three, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Got a motion by Mister Hema and a second by Mister Lundell. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to the approval of the minutes from the June twelfth, two thousand seventeen Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mister Althoff.
Second it.
And a second by Mister Hema. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number five, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Is anyone here for anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing none, that'll bring us to number six here, which is our public hearings for this evening. Uh, six A is really a rezoning RB to R four. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the rezoning.
Could you explain what RB is? I'm kinda.
Oh, yeah. That's my fault for just not explaining very well. So RB stands for Residential Business District. And so most of the area, um, north of the river on Fifth Street is zoned residential business. Residential uses are not permitted in the Residential Business District. Therefore, what the applicant, Mister William Otting, is proposing to do by, um, placing a residential use on that lot would need a rezoning in order for that to occur because the current zoning of those lots does not allow a residential use. Although it is called residential business.
I thought it was the multifamily that caused the.
No.
No?
It is any resi- in my research that I've done, any residential use is not permitted in the Residential Business District.
Well, the only reason I ask is because there, there used to be a house there. The old Arnold House was there for years across some quick trip in that, in that area, and it was tore down. It, was it, the zoning changed at that time to RB?
Yes.
After that house went away?
Yes, and then once the house was demolished, then the whatever zoning is there would take over. So even if it was residential business at that time, the house would have been considered non-conforming. Once it was demolished, then it goes to residential business, which doesn't allow homes.
Well, and actually, most of that whole area up there is residential business, and there are still homes in there.
Was it changed because the city thought that the industrial park would expand there, or?
I'm not sure. I'm too new here to know when it changed or anything, but.
I do know that, uh, from everything I've learned in the years I've been out doing this, the residential business was a zoning they created because there were so many different uses of the land in, in this area. When, when that went into effect, I believe even the malt house might have been running at that time. When all these went to residential business, but.
Those houses are there now. I guess I'm not against changing the zoning because you might as well put houses there. I mean, you've got room to the south, uh, that more property or something if you want more commercial or. I mean, I, I think the car wash is probably a dead issue across the street too.
Yes, so, yep, this is just.
As long as you're gonna keep those houses there, why not put more houses there?
Yeah, this is just rezoning those two parcels, um, for R four so that he can place a residential structure on those two parcels.
Okay.
So is he moving houses in there or apartment building in there?
According to this, he's moving a, he's moving in a, a duplex.
Duplex. Yep.
And then he plans maybe to build two more houses in addition.
Well, what I got was out of all this was that he intends to, um, basically build more or less a, like a basement almost.
Yep.
And the basement would have two uni- you know, family units. The thing that he's wanting to move in is it currently like a duplex, so. It's putting a duplex on what would be a structure, um, like a base. I guess it'd be. That was, that was the proposed use.
The, what we have here doesn't show anything about parking accommodations. Am I reading that wrong?
So in the, for the conditional use permit part, there is a condition that he must provide at least nine parking spaces at no charge to the tenants of that building.
And how far do they have to be from the curb?
Um, from the front, it's thirty feet. From the side and rear, it is five feet.
I just don't see anything here that gives me an idea how that's gonna look, but that's the only question I had, but.
And, yeah, and he has also been in contact with the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Um, they told for access to that site, they told him it'd be about three weeks when they'd get back to him, and it's, it's been about three weeks, but we haven't heard anything back yet from them.
Jim, you're a resident up there. What, what's your?
I guess the question I got is what is he gonna do as far as, uh, filling in dirt? Is he gonna raise the deep level up? Where's the water gonna go? It's gonna go to the street? Is it gonna go to the east? Uh, that was my question, I guess.
Yeah, and that is up to our city engineer, um, who is not here tonight. But they would be making him place fill and for proper drainage. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know enough about, I'm not gonna speak to the specifics on that, but I know that he will be working with our engineering department on proper drainage for that site.
I guess I don't have trouble putting the house in there or whatever this is in there, but, yeah, it's, what they do around it is gonna be awfully important for drainage and, and elevations, um, and parking makes a big difference on that too for drainage. That's the only thing I'm not seeing here, though.
Because parking does, I'm Jeff Thomas, by the way. I own the Quick Stop, eleven twenty-four hundred fifth.
Yeah.
Um, that's, parking is an issue.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what, I, I, I just don't, I just don't see this, if I don't see what they're gonna do here.
Yeah, well, they should give you some kind of a plan to make a decision here, I would think, but, I mean, at least a plan of
Yeah.
property, what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, that, that's, that's where I have an issue with this, is that I'm not seeing the whole layout. That would make a huge difference.
Yep.
Cause you're probably gonna have minimum of what, four to eight cars there? If you're, what is it, a fourplex or an eightplex?
Fourplex.
So you're, yeah, you're gonna probably have eight to ten cars there with.
Yeah, I'm not sure. He's required to have at least nine parking spaces.
Okay, alright.
So, nine.
That's, that's actually in here under the conditional use part.
No, no, it won't make a difference there, but, but the council's gotta see. You can't approve.
Samuelson drew up, that must show one of the, or one of the duplexes.
Is it duplexes or is it these single lots gonna be single homes on the?
No.
Two lots to the north.
That is still under discussion, um, for, also for the conditional use permit. He has to go through and merge those lots together before we would allow him to move any other structures on. But since it's resi- we would be rezoning if it was agreed upon to R four, single family home would not be allowed there.
So if I'm reading this right, it's, it's an existing building that's going to be moved from someplace. And, um, is it going to have a basement?
No, the basement would be constructed onsite.
But it will not have a basement?
It wa- it will have a basement that is raised above ground enough to comply with, for it to be an apartment unit.
Right.
So yes, there will be.
Without the need for egress windows from what I'm seeing here. It looks like they're planning on having the elevation high enough, so.
There are photos.
More like a split, yeah. A little bit more like a split.
What we're looking at right here, yeah.
They must have about six feet of hill they gotta fill in there.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a lot of dirt.
The plan for the duplexes to the two lots to the south and then leaves two single lots open right across from your place there. What, but I guess that's he, I don't know what his plans are beyond the duplex right now.
I guess my concern is that he's got enough parking involved, cause.
Yeah, I understand that.
Sure, everybody knows that I've had my issues with the neighbors up there.
Exactly. Parking's at a premium right there.
I can't believe they're giving out per- getting, giving out a permit for that all occasions and not having, what's he got, five parking spots there? And they're all, all on the state right away.
And on the north side of that building, that's your property, I suppose.
The whole parking lot is mine, yeah.
Whole parking lot's yours.
Well, you should probably just rent it to them. Rent them those ones next to it.
Doesn't work that way because if you watch my traffic flow.
Yeah, it comes from both directions.
Yeah.
Twelve cars, five minutes later, they're gone. Ten minutes later, it goes by another fifteen or five or, you know, it doesn't work. And I told them that before I even bought it, that I was not renting parking.
Yeah.
Or supplying parking.
Right. But you probably still do sometimes, I'm sure.
Not anymore.
No?
What's, what's in the back of that Cromers? Is there no parking back there? I haven't.
I don't think there's any back there either. All it is is alley, isn't it?
Well, Larson owns, Jim owns that whole piece behind us.
My, I do agree that the site is viable, you know, for a multi-housing structure, but we need to s- it needs to, we need to see more details. I need to see more details.
Which, that can be a recommendation that.
Before they, and this is, this happens every once in a while. We get someone, you know, in a hurry to get something going and we don't see enough to actually see what's really gonna happen or answer your questions either, uh, unless we have a, a, um, what kind of plan do you think we should see or do you think I'm asking for? I need, I, I mean.
Well, they should supply with some kind of a drawing.
Yeah, the engineers have got a deal.
Here's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't see that. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I guess the question that, uh, the drainage, right now, there's probably a block all four directions of water that's going to my place. And, uh, Jim Herkey, four oh four Ohio is who I am.
Yeah.
Um, there is an alleyway there and I don't know, I haven't done any, uh, surveying. If it, uh, is possible that the guy could drain a line, drain a line, dig a line from my place down to seventeen. I think there's a lot of fall there, and I don't know if he's gonna fill in dirt.
So the city engineer needs to take a good look at this and see what's actually gonna work for the hydraulics and all of that and, and that's what he does, so. That's, I, that's where I feel like we should be.
Well, I know the real, the real issue is that big parking lot. I mean, that's
You understand that.
Not letting the water drain, so it's gotta go somewhere and right now, it's my understanding, they pretty well slopes to all those houses and senics there.
And there's a, a right-of-way issue of some sort? There's a right-of-way issue? You mentioned a right-of-way issue?
Um, there needs to be an access point. Um, currently, there is not a.
Who's gonna determine that?
Minnesota Department of Transit.
So we need to know what that is before the engineer can even do anything as far as determine how this thing is gonna drain.
Um.
He probably needs to know that, or how big the parking lot will be, and is it gonna be paved or is it gonna be gravel? Cause again, it's people coming in and out of there, we need to know. But otherwise, I agree, it's a, you know, could certainly hold a multifamily structure in there, but.
So maybe we're all in agreement that we could rezone it, but I think before we go any further than that, maybe we better more answers to the.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Going there.
Yeah, so we can do the rezoning tonight and we can go back and work more with the conditional use permit part.
Conditionally, is that what you said?
The conditional use permit?
Yes.
For, yeah, we can go work, staff will work with him more on details.
And then it's up to the board to decide.
Yes.
Or we should maybe see it one more time.
Yes, we will, we will bring it back.
Yeah. So should we just, so we just.
Should we make a motion to rezone it to, uh, R four?
Yeah, so that's.
For him to go forward, he's gonna have to know that we're gonna, we're gonna rezone it.
Mm-hmm.
But he has to meet, you know, a lot.
On con- with condition that.
Yeah, with conditions, uh.
Yes, supply more information.
Yeah, city engineer has to be involved in.
Yes.
And the highway department has to be involved. What do you think?
Yep.
Does that sound right? Fair? Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
So a motion would be.
So, motion would be to pass resolution twenty seventeen dash eight, and the motion would be to not approve.
With conditions, or how would you say it? Move?
So move to approve the resolution seventeen dash eight, which is the rezoning.
Yeah.
Resolution seventeen dash nine will not be approved. It will all be tabled until the next meeting.
I'd make that motion.
I'd second that motion.
Before we do. Before we do the motions, let's actually close the public hearing for, um, the rezoning. And.
Thought you did.
Since we're going to table the conditional use permit, there's probably not a, a good reason to open that public hearing, is there? Or would we wanna open it and vacate it?
I'd open it so that we.
And vacate it so that, or table it?
Yeah, yes.
So it's not actually closed, it's just, alright. At this time, I'd like to open the conditional use permit for moving in a structure. And we will table that until we have more detail on the plan specific to. Parking and access onto Fifth Street and how that's gonna work with the, uh, Minnesota Department of Transportation.
With the neighbors and the neighbors.
And the neighbors. And that'll bring us to discussion item, resolution two thousand seventeen dash eight, which is the rezoning. We had a motion by Mr. Altough and a second by Mr. Hema. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that would.
That's what we can do.
The discussion item is, this would be a good time probably to discuss anything in particular that we'd like to see. For that conditional use permit. I believe parking was brought up, so, um, the structure itself. I don't think anybody has a, an issue with the structure or that structure not conforming in that neighborhood. It's more or less with the parking and drainage were the two big things that I heard. Also, I heard, um, access to, um, to Fifth Street there. I know that that's gonna be a.
That would be a rub with it.
Well, you know, I think one of the things that's gonna kind of come into question is that, that road that's right there too.
Yeah.
I mean, there's already, there's already the road that goes down toward the fairgrounds.
There's access back? There's, there's not a alley, is there? Well, it shows that, that Saint Clair Street, which runs by the quick stop there is, that's vacated there, uh, on this property. Uh huh.
Oh, this one? Oh, so Saint Clair is the one that runs on the other side of that.
Comes by the quick stop and it, or go, when it goes across Fifth Street, it's vacated.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Probably cause it would've gone into the parking lot or.
Does, does the state have to give them access?
Yes, because it's a state highway.
Yeah.
That is their jurisdiction to give them access.
I know all about those guys. I can't hear what?
I wonder if they'd make them put in a turn lane for it or something?
Stop and go light, stop and go light maybe.
Or, or there'd be only access from the back.
You gotta do something that'll be safe, so it'll be safe, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially if it's multifamily, so.
Well, you're regardless, they've gotta come up with a more consistent plan on what they're getting, what their plans are for parking.
Yeah.
How, how do you get into it and drainage? Well, I know it does say something about nine, nine spots.
Yeah, engineer. Make sure to talk to the engineer. Cause that's a, if that's an issue, he might not notice it unless he hears it from you guys, so. How's, how do you do that?
Well.
I have his email information and then I've taken notes also, so I will let him know all of your concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
She'll help you. So we wanna see progress in town, but.
Is that, uh.
Throws things off, you know.
Is that, uh, does that encompass everything that everybody's got a concern about? Everybody in the audience as well, that's where our concerns are. Are there others that we didn't consider?
It's gonna affect him or probably downstream with the cross.
Yeah.
Is he, uh, okay, there's, there's an alley there, it's not vacated. Um, is he allowed to take trees out of the alley?
What was that?
No, it's not.
Not the alley, it's not vacated. Saint Clair Street going across is.
The, the north-south alley I'm talking about.
Oh.
To the rear? On the back? Um, if it's not vacated, if it's still owned by the city, he would need permission from the city in order to remove trees there.
Okay, thank you.
So there we are.
Any other questions or comments on the, uh, conditional use permit part of that? Anything that you guys can think of? I mean, this is definitely, if you got something, you're thinking this is the time to say it. Cause if we're asking him for more detail and he comes back with the things we asked and we're still scratching our heads about something else. That might not seem real fair.
As far as access to it and, and what's gonna happen to the water, uh, where the water's gonna go.
Well, I know the, it did specify in the conditional use permit that there were nine parking spaces. But, uh, I guess it almost sounds, yeah, and it doesn't say whether it's paved or not paved.
Be an issue, it's all the other little things.
Yes, yes.
All the external things. And they've got sewer and water and all that. What's that?
Who's actually gonna own this?
The.
It will be a rental or?
Yes, it will be a rental and it will be owned by him. Um, he is, Mr. Oding. Um, he is purchasing the property from Glenn Mulvahill.
Okay.
As we speak.
I was curious, cause he really never said who the owner was, who the owner was gonna be. I assume O- Oding is the house mover over on forty-six over there.
You're right, you're right. Working together.
I'm sure Mulvahill bought the property the way it sounds and.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's had it for a while.
Yeah. I think that's all we can do.
Well, that brings us to, uh, number eight then, we'll.
I'll take a motion to table the item.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so that's to table the.
Item until August and then we'll bring it back.
The conditional use permit part.
I'll make a motion.
Table a conditional, conditional use permit. I'll second it.
I've got a motion by Mr. Lundell and a second by Mr. Altough. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Tabled.
That brings us to number eight. Planning commission member comments. Anybody have anything?
What are they gonna open the, um, brewery? That's what I wanted to know.
That's a good question. She probably, she doesn't know? Well, now we're in trouble.
Are we getting more building permits in town?
Yes, um, so I also work with Goodhue County Building Permits. That's part of my job. We've seen quite an influx for single family homes right now. As well as other work being done for commercial buildings, um, and single family homes, so.
Within the city limits?
Yes, yes.
Any requests for city services outside of the city limits?
Not any recent ones.
Okay.
We're think, we're really expanding, still building within the city limits, getting some of those vacant lots filled up right now.
I'm just curious if anybody on the edge is.
Well, they are in the process of trying to buy land north of town for that data center.
Where?
Data center north of our industrial park, no? There's been a.
Oh, that's, uh, um. Yeah, but that's not residential.
Property from the three property owners.
That's not residential property.
No. And I heard now the winery, Ron Stoll from the winery has, uh, got the final bid. So I'm sure he's gonna be talking to the city shortly too.
Is it where the garage is?
Yeah. And that'll be an issue because he wants to close the street, so. Well, the one going into the parking lot?
Mm-hmm. I don't know how that's gonna work. Cool.
Well, I guess that would mean we'd probably need a whole nother entrance on the nineteen then. I'm sure that parking lot, there's probably, for that many spaces, there has to be more than one way out of it, doesn't there?
That, that parking lot's a disaster. That should've been done when they'd done that parking lot in the first place. Cause that parking lot entrance should be a crush on the econo. You got those two things there, that's an accident. Waiting to happen for a long time. It's time to fix that too if you're gonna do it.
Is that the city that, is that, is that state?
That I don't know. On the state highway, it runs by it, but.
Yeah, nineteen.
Private, private lot. So, um, they're gonna do something over where, uh, the other side of the, or the other, end of the block from the tire shop. I think somebody is rebuilding that old Barron's building.
Yeah.
Think I know who that is, but anyway, I don't know what's going in there or what they're rebuilding it for.
I know they did a lot of work taking, take, taking out the mold.
So it's what we could do.
Okay, talk to you later. Yeah, they, they tore out a lot of the inside. I think, uh, from what I had heard, there was some issues with the roof. But they've already had somebody out there working on the roof already. So I think they pretty well gutted the inside and.
Well, the NSP and on SV XL building is for sale. But I was told by XL that they're, they're gonna buy it and keep it, I think. It'll be another.
He put it up for sale, but I think XL's gonna come back and buy it. They're renting that, I didn't know that. Yeah, well, it's on lease from what I, from what I had read, it was on lease through, I think, two thousand eighteen, so.
And I will ask this often. Have we heard from Goodhue County when they're gonna connect up to Saint Ansgar's and twenty-four up there?
No, I've not heard anything.
No, no plans yet? No?
No.
That would.
There's a house out there in that.
Yeah, they, they finally.
Yeah, I did see there was one out there. Well, somebody gotta be first, right?
Looking forward to that connection.
Yeah.
Well, Ken back there works for MDOT and he said, no, the plans are there for the interchange, you know.
For the which?
The interchange there comes across, so.
So they're at nineteen, at nineteen?
Yeah, to connect twenty-four.
Yeah.
Oh, to the other side?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that, that's more of the county. You're talking about, uh, St. Louis County twenty-four.
Yes.
The big holdup from what I understand on that is, uh, mostly, uh, the issue with bats. And, uh, um, that, uh, disease that the bats have. There's been a study going on and so they, they can't do any construction while the.
While the study's going on?
They've got, they, there's certain time periods where, when they can do work, when they can't.
I see.
And, uh, that's part of the problem. We tend to deal with that on Highway fifty, um.
Really?
Uh, west of, uh, Hampton.
Where, where are the bats? Down in the gully?
Uh, in the trees.
Yeah, it's, but it's got, getting a fungus of some sort.
Yeah, some sort of fungus.
Yeah.
And I know MDOT's talked about their interchange with over by Saint Ansgar's.
Yes.
Ansgar's isn't happy, um, because, um, MDOT would require them to have access strictly through Harwood Avenue. Uh, not directly onto.
I see.
Um. So there, there's a number of issues that are still getting worked out.
But the, but the right of way's been, all the right of way's been purchased for it, as far as we know.
I don't know.
Yeah. Don't have my connection anymore there. Have to go to the county and ask them.
I have some connections, but not on that one.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, just closing.
We're all done.
That brings. I, I've got a motion by, uh, Mr. Lundell and I heard Mr. Altough start to second it.
Heard that too, yeah.
Yeah, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.